We'll start the second part of our program right now with the candidates for the District 303 School Board. We have five candidates for three, four-year terms. And they are the five people seated at that end of the table. Julian Barker, Michael Bryant, Kathleen Huel, Rebecca Becky McCabe, and Garrett Seaman. And at this end, we have Poonam Gupta Krishnan and Nicholas P. Mannheim for candidates for a two-year unexpired school board. So we thank you all for being here with us this evening. And we will start with the two-minute statements, which each candidate has been allowed in just a moment. I think I will just go over quickly the ground rules in case you weren't here at the beginning before. Everyone has two minutes for a statement. Then when all of you have finished, we will go to questions. Each of you will have one minute to answer each question. And when we've answered all the questions, or we've decided we've answered enough questions, then we will go to closing statements, which will be one minute long. So I would like to remind you once again that each of you is asked to state only your own positions, or how you would act yourself, and an issue that whatever it is we are addressing it, please refrain from telling us what your opponents would do. That's something that we in the League like to avoid. People come here to hear you tell us what you're going to do. So with that, excuse me, we'll begin the opening statements with Julian Barker.
Good evening, everybody. I am Julian Barker. I have three children who are in grade school and in middle school, and then I have a preschooler who are all in district buildings. So I am a parent. I've lived in St. Charles nine years now, so I'm a homeowner and a taxpayer. I do have a husband who is at home with our children right now. And we really love and enjoy living in St. Charles and all it has to offer. My children have had a great experience in D303 schools. And I've been an educator, and I've been committed to education and students my entire adult life. I feel that running for the school board is just a natural progression to that commitment. And I'm really looking to improve student achievement. I want to focus on wellness for students, their social-emotional growth, and their health. I am looking to kind of deep dive into data and look at our progress, and really look at it honestly. I'm interested in improving community engagement, and I'm also interested in looking at our -- excuse me. I'm also interested in looking at our retention of student-centered teachers and keeping -- oh, thirty seconds, sorry. And making sure that we're keeping those teachers. I know that our percentage of retention is below eighty percent, and I'd like to improve that. And I'd also like to attract new and engaging teachers to our district.
Thank you, Ms. Barker. The next candidate is Michael Bryant.
Good evening. My name is Mike Bryant. I'm running for one of the three open positions of the four-year terms. I'd first like to thank the League of Women Voters of Central Kane County for hosting the event tonight. I've lived in St. Charles for the last twelve years with my wife. I have three children, a kindergartner, second grader, and fourth grader at Norton Creek Elementary School. I currently teach business education at Batavia High School. Some other responsibilities I've taken on at Batavia High School and through the Batavia Public Schools, I've sat on numerous committees, whether it's the District Insurance Committee, Finance Committee that handles resource allocation, and, you know, D303, I think, has really excelled in some areas, but I also feel there's a lot of room for improvement with the education that our kids are getting. So I'm running for school board because I want to contribute and give back to the community and improve our schools. I feel that my background in education, my understanding of school finance, my ability to think critically, to analyze data, will help students grow academically, socially, emotionally. I'm running for school board because I want to provide equitable opportunities for all students throughout the district. And lastly, I'm running for school board so our tax dollars are used where they're going to be for the greatest good of all students.
Thank you. The next candidate is Kathleen T. Huel.
Thank you. This is on, very good. Hello, everyone. My name is Kathleen Huel. I've lived in St. Charles for thirty years. My husband's a physician at Delmore, and our three children are adults now, but they went through D303 schools all the way through. They're all doing very well, although I often think I wish they could go to the schools as they're constituted now, because D303 -- the youngest one graduated about ten years ago. Our schools are doing wonderfully, and there's so many good things happening. I wish they could have maybe had that opportunity. Education was very -- has been very important in my life. I had a modest start in life, but I -- my education led me to great choices and great opportunities, and I wish that for all of our children. D303 is a district that is doing very well. We're solid financially. We have the lowest tax rate in Kane County. We have the lowest debt in Kane County. We have the lowest debt amongst -- we're in the lowest four percent in terms of debt in the collar counties. So financially, we're in great shape through great good stewardship, and I would see that -- of course, I would continue that, because that's my -- that's one of the things that's most important. But the most important thing is our children. And our children are now today in much better buildings. They -- there was a variety of situations in the past, but now all of our schools have the same equipment. And once Thompson is finished, those students, all of our middle school students, will have an adequate building to be in with an equivalent educational experience, and I'm very proud of that. We've created very safe and secure schools as much as we can in this day and age, and I would like the opportunity to continue that. I'll be really interested in getting into some of the other topics as we go forward, but thank you for coming out tonight in this climate weather.
Thank you, Ms. Huel. The next candidate is Rebecca Becky McCabe.
Good evening. Thank you to the League for having us. To me, this is what democracy looks like. I'm Becky McCabe. I'm a retired educator, though I'm failing at retirement by being still very involved with education. I've been married almost forty-five years. We have two grown sons who both live here in St. Charles, and three grandchildren, two who are in the D303 school district, one at Redling who loves Redling, and one at Norton Creek who just loves all the new friends that have joined her this year. I started my career down in the Champaign-Urbana area. I was a teacher. I became a union leader. I was very involved in negotiations, and I would say that most of my leadership came from those experiences. I eventually decided to become a principal, and I tell people I went to the dark side, but was a principal in the school where I was a teacher. I was Principal of the Year, nationally distinguished principal, ended up going to the State Board of Education and ran the state testing, and then went to DeKalb for a few years to do curriculum, and then came to St. Charles where I was the Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Principals. I feel that what I bring to the table is experiences and knowledge that go beyond just being in the classroom, but also perspective of how parents and community and board members can work together to make an excellent school district. D303 is in good shape. I don't come angry or upset about things. I'm coming because I think this school district can continue to improve and do a great job with the resources we have.
Thank you, Ms. McCabe. And the fifth candidate for the four-year seat is Garrett Seaman.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you to the League for pulling together this event. I have been a former educator, teacher around the Chicagoland area, former administrator, and most recently was a Deputy of Educational Technology for Chicago Public Schools, where I oversaw about a hundred schools on the south side of Chicago, have been through events such as the largest turnaround of U.S. history, where we closed sixty schools, all neighborhood schools. So I'm familiar with that dynamic and what it takes to really bring the community in and get them involved in those type of situations. After I left Chicago Public Schools, I started a company that's allowed me to travel across the U.S. and probably sit in north of two thousand classrooms, really understanding what effective instruction, design, and delivery is for those schools. Very dynamic, very progressive situations, but still have their challenges. I'm blessed in that I have three boys. My wife and I send our three -- our two children to Wasco Elementary School. We love the school. We love the community. I'm running for school board because I'm in my forever community. I'm in my forever home. I want to have an impact on what my three boys experience K-12. And I think my background, both inside the public sector and private sector for business development lends itself well to that, and we'll have a strong instructional backing and hold our district accountable and leadership accountable for the work that needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seaman. The next two candidates are running only against each other, not against the other five. So the first to speak is Poonam Gupta Krishnan, and these are for the two-year seat.
Thank you. And good evening, everybody. Thank you, League, for pulling this together, and it's such a pleasure to see that in the weekday evening, all of you came together to listen to the candidates, thank you, and that shows a great, good community wants to make sure we have, you know, high-quality education. So I'm sorry if I didn't get your name. My name is Poonam Gupta Krishnan. Pretty much so. I'm running for two-year seat, and the reason I'm running is I care deeply about education and high academic achievement. I am not only a parent of D303 for thirteen years, and the sun is going to east right now. I am also have experienced, a personal experience, the value of high-quality K-12 education coming from a low-income family, having three siblings, going to the places that the siblings have. We have touched on universities like Stanford, Harvard, Dartmoor, University of Illinois Systems, that tells you that, you know, we have learned.
Hold your mic down a little.
Oh, it's dry. Okay.
It's rained.
Oh, okay. So, you know, understand the importance of K-12 in preparing students for future. So I have worked as a middle school teacher, as a chemist, as an international IT business owner currently, and served on a number of boards and advised on a number of positions in startups and incubators. Over the years, I have seen issues with D303 in standardized test scores, inconsistencies, questions regarding transparencies. I have decided to give two years of my life to the cause that I feel very strongly about, to bring the performance improvement with my personal professional skills that includes entrepreneurial mindset and international experience than I saw.
Thank you. The other candidate for the two-year seat is Nicholas P. Mannheim.
Good evening. Yes, I'm Nick Mannheim, and I guess I'll lead off with the why. Everyone asks me why. Why do you want to do two more years? Ten years ago, I was a long-term sub at St. Charles North for the architecture class, and I was completely overwhelmed and thought the students had me. And six weeks went by, and I ran into one of those students at a store, and he said, "I'm going to architecture school because of you." And I said, "Wow. I guess I made a difference." I didn't think I did. So then, a couple of years later, there was an opening seat on the board. So I thought, well, maybe I could make a difference there. So I pursued that. Now I'm wrapping up my second term, and I think we have made a difference. I think we're a great school district. I think there are a lot of areas we can improve on, but I want to make sure that we stay a great school district. And I love it. Some days are not as easy to love, but I do love going in there and, you know, working with administration, working with staff, working with fellow board members, and how can we make a difference? How can we continue to make this a great school district?
Thank you, Mr. Mannheim. Going to the questions. All of you will get the same questions, but we will start with a different person each time. And just for the first question, we'll start with Mr. Bryant. What qualities or experiences do you possess that help you stand out from the others?
I think I touched on this in my introduction. What I've learned from this campaign is, you know, I'm not going to be a career politician, but what I do like, I do like looking at numbers and analyzing data. And I think that's an important characteristic that school board members need. But I'm also an educator. I'm in the classroom. I know what these kids need every single day as well. So by me being in the classroom, the academic, the social, the emotional needs that they need, the analytical skills that I have, those are the qualities I think that I want to make a school board member.
Thank you. Ms. Huel?
Yes, I bring a number of personal strengths and skills to this job. I did neglect to say at the very beginning that I've been here thirty years, but I've been on the board for sixteen years already, and I'm currently the board president. So I am experienced and knowledgeable, have gone through some tough things over the years. I put in a tremendous amount of time in this job. I prepare, I question, I find my answers, and then I can make my decisions. And that's harder than it seems, and some of the difficult things that come before the board, because we are dealing with your children and your money. It's no greater values. I am also very different. I've been PTO president four times, including the year at Redling, when Redling was between Haynes and Thompson. It turned out to be a really good year. Maybe it shouldn't have happened, but it turned out to be a good year, and that kind of drove me further to want to be on the school board. I feel that my energy, my passion, my desire to do a good job for this community, to serve this community, is non-parallel.
Ms. McCabe?
I've been in three different districts. I've been at the state level. So I come with different kinds of experiences. But I think what I bring to the table is the knowledge of D303 having worked there. I know that some people find this to be a conflict of interest. However, I think what I have, the ability to do, is to look at folks in the eye and ask them the deep and tough questions about teaching, about learning, about all students. I know the system. I know the folks who work there. I had the honor and privilege to be in almost every elementary classroom to see instruction. I've researched areas of implementation of curriculum. We've worked on leadership. Throughout my career, I've been known to put kids first and to ask tough questions. So even though it may be seen as a conflict of interest, and I have had that experience, I think I bring value from all the experiences I've had over my career and worth your vote.
Thank you. Ms. McCabe?
I'll elaborate a little bit on my opening statement. I've worked in four different school districts, so in the public sector as a teacher and as an administrator, and then in Chicago Public Schools. So complex systems. And then in the private sector, I grew a company basically from a book. So wrote some intellectual property that we felt was pretty impactful on student achievement, and went around the country and began to kind of share that message. That has allowed me to grow a network of very progressive, smart administrators at the district level, building level, and leadership level around the classroom. And so that has honed my experience. And to round me out, my wife teaches in Batavia, so we have that rigorous debate when we come home at night, the union discussion, everything is included with that. And so she took her first job, her first teaching job in Batavia, has been there ever since. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go forward to Ms. Barker. We'll keep that separate, and then we'll come back to you. Okay?
So welcome several of us are educators or former educators. I too am an educator, as I said, but I do have some special qualifications I feel that line me towards this position. I was a special education teacher, a building-level administrator, a special education district-level administrator, as well as I'm the executive director of curriculum and instruction for a group of therapeutic day schools at this time. During all of that, I learned to work collaboratively to solve problems, and I learned to resolve conflict in healthy ways. And I've also learned that you can work with people you disagree with and come up with really excellent solutions. And I think that working in those positions have allowed me to do that. I'm also a trauma-informed educator, so I'm especially trained to go out and train others in how to provide trauma-informed structures and care within their organizations. So social-emotional wellness is very important to me.
Thank you, Ms. Barker.
Experience, as I mentioned, finishing my eighth year. I think the first year and a half on the board is overwhelming, and there's a lot thrown at you, and you're expected to learn a lot. And that first year, you kind of feel like you're swimming a little bit. And then by halfway through that second year, you start to, you know, find your legs, if you will, and find your voice. And I won't claim to learning teaching is my strong suit. My strong suit is business, business services. That's where I excel. I've been on the business service committee all eight years. I started off as co-chair for two years, and then I've now been chair the last six years. But I think that's what brings a board together. All the boards, I've said, we've changed every couple of years, whether it's by one or two or three, but we all bring different skill sets to the board, and that's why we have to work with each other, because we all have common goals.
Thank you. Ms. Gupta Krishnan?
Well, it does take a lot of learning, but I have been first in at least five to six things. First, to go to college, to first to start entrepreneurship journey. So I bring entrepreneurship, international experience, and the process-driven approach that works with bringing the community together, bringing the board together, defining the goals, and putting the process that brings the results. And that's what I bring to the table. And for us, for me, like, having the business in three continents, the kinds on and differences is something that leader learns and adds on it on their feet. So that's what I bring to the table.
Thank you. Next question, first responder will be Ms. Huel. Several of you have already said you think that St. Charles schools are doing well academically. Would you make changes in this area? Academics?
Well, I have been able to be part of the cheering team as our administration comes up with new ideas all the time. An important part of our district is that we consider that we have a, and we do, we have a well-established culture of continuous improvement. And so whether it's academics, or buildings, or employee relations, they're always looking to get better, and I admire that very much. There are so many things that we've been doing. It's hard to even really put it into words, but we have our, I guess, the initial impetus right now is to have our kids college and career-ready. So there's so many ways to do that. You've got classes, you have internships, AP classes, Project Lead the Way classes, and I would like to just see our administration, who are very talented, excellent people, continue to find the best in our school, best things to bring to our school district. I understand on Monday, we're going to hear about blended learning, and I'm interested in what that is and how that will affect our school district.
Thank you, Ms. McCabe. Academics is a big word, but what I would be looking for and be asking about is how is curriculum decided? Who's sitting around the table? How do we implement? Implementation is key to having teachers have the right tools and resources so that children can learn. How are we addressing all children and all of their needs in a way that will help them all be successful? I really believe that we have the opportunity to bring more folks to the table to talk about that, and I think it all comes down to relationships and instruction. And if kids are feeling safe, and they're feeling that they are being heard, and teachers are having the resources, then I think we'll excel in a lot of ways.
Mr. Seaman?
Regarding academics, when a family looks for a community and they begin to kind of decide where they're going to move to, there are a couple of metrics that they look at. The most common is school rating and how the schools are measured. Yes, it's based on the state testing, but we have seven of fifteen schools that are exemplary or at the highest rating. So less than half of our schools qualify as kind of that exemplary level. So can we do better? Absolutely. Can academics be more rigorous? Absolutely. Can students have opportunity for their time, place, path, and pace for how they experience that instruction? Absolutely. We've got a lot of room to grow there, but it starts at the top. There needs to be a very clear vision for what this district leadership defines as their academic performance, and we must hold our superintendent accountable to that.
Ms. Barker?
So overall, I guess I do believe that we're doing well in a way, but well, it's a hard word to come up with a definition for. We do have an issue where we have disparity between elementary and the high schools. So we need to have K, well, actually, early childhood through transition alignment, to be strategic about how we are setting our goals up and how we're going to figure out if those goals are actually being met. And that needs to be done through giving the superintendent a contract with goals and indicators. Right now, we have commitments. So at this point, I do see that there is room for growth and improvement, although overall, yes, we do do well as a district.
And Mr. Bryant?
I'm going to agree with Ms. Barker here, but overall, I think the district is doing well. But I think that doesn't tell the whole story. When you start looking at individual schools and the growth that one school has over the other, or the lack of growth for that matter, you really have to start asking questions. You know, what's being done at that school to where one school is achieving more than the others? Are the teachers getting the correct resources? So, yeah, I think overall, it's a great district, but we need to look deeper. And to do that, I think we need to, again, have some accountability with strong goals from all administrators, and we need to really make sure that, you know, we're holding them accountable, that they're meeting those goals.
Thank you all. Ms. Gupta Krishnan, please.
Whether we are doing good or not is a measure of where we place the bar. And as Garrett said, and most others said, that, okay, we are fifty-person exemplary, but do we want to see that as great, or there's a fifty percent chance of improvement? In my eyes, when I look at the elementary and high schools-- In my eyes, when I look at the elementary and high school, there is a lot of variations in a school-wise individually on the weather math or English or overall development. So, I'm not saying that I would like a lot more improvement. How we change it is on the policy level, the board is responsible for the governance. So, understanding and knowledge of policies and translating it as outcome-based evaluations and then improving is what I would like to see.
Thank you. Mr. Mannheim?
Thank you. I would say we all strive for improvement, right? That's why we're all up here. We all want to see improvement. And I would say I see an improvement from my first year on the board until now. Every year, we get better or stronger and it's different areas, but each year, that's our goal, you know, not staying satisfied. And I think that's why we're a district that people want to come to, want to raise their family here, because we continue to grow. And I think when you stop growing, that's where the issues are. You know, just this year, the high schools brought in a project synergy where they placed high school kids with businesses. And I have the honor to have two of them working for my firm right now. And it's such a great experience because academics isn't just a textbook. It's professional learning. It's a chance for them to see, do I want to be an architect? Do I want to be an engineer? But it's these opportunities that weren't always there and I think every year, we try to add those things. And that's one of those great things that now this year, there's an opportunity for those kids to see that.
Thank you. Here's a question you probably should have been expecting. Do you support arming teachers? And would you have supported the IASB proposal to allow the training and arming teachers? Ms. McKay, you're next. One of the saddest days was Sandy Hook. And during that period of time, we had a lot of discussions about what happens in schools. And my sister-in-law said, "You wouldn't have run at that shooter, would you, Becky?" And I said, "Absolutely, I would have because we put kids first." No, I would not arm teachers. Having guns in schools is a very dangerous thing when you're dealing with children and all the issues that would go into that. I would not have supported the state, the School Board Association's proposal. I would work more to keeping our schools safe, our kids safe emotionally, as well as who comes into our buildings, but I would not arm teachers. Thank you. Mr. Seaman?
No, I do not support that and I would not arm teachers. When I think about the dialogue that came from that, that's where the richness is. This is a absolutely fluid situation where we have dynamic environments inside and outside of our classroom and we have dynamic threats. So, the dialogue is what's critical there. So, I do support the conversation that came from that. I would support any relationship that we have established, which as I understand is very solid with the city and with the police department. Open dialogue with those professionals, those experts to advise us on what needs to happen to ensure that our classrooms and our buildings are absolutely safe and secure.
Ms. Barker?
So, that's a hard note for me. I would not support guns in schools or arming teachers. I do believe it's more important to train teachers and students how to survive a violent critical incident, for example, Ellis trainer, which is active shooter training. So, I believe that the training actually increases survival as opposed to putting more guns in the school that can really do more damage than good.
Mr. Bryant?
I am also a fellow on army teachers, guns. I don't feel have any place in schools other than the resource officer. I think there's multiple other ways that we can, things we can do to ensure that our kids are safe when they go to school every day, whether it's, you know, the entrances and checking in of visitors, the training of teachers, that, you know, the resource officers, I mentioned, the middle school has recently added a resource officer, which I'm definitely in support of. So, guns in schools, no, but again, there are many other ways that we can ensure that our schools are safe.
Mr. Mannheim?
I'm sorry. People in the audience might be surprised at the question, but it did come up. IASB is our statewide organization. It was a recommendation and it was a robust discussion at the board level, but our board decided that our vote, our one of 700 votes, because there are 700-plus school districts, our vote would be that no, we did not want to have our teachers armed in schools. The bigger conversation though had to do with why did this come up? And it's because that's fine if you're in St. Charles and your police department is right down the road, several. But what if you live in Genoa or someplace there the schools are? So, that was the question. Should, you know, should it be up to local control? But we still felt strongly enough about the guns. I would just like to also say that there are other things we certainly do is we have a school resource officer at every high school and we'll add one to each middle school next year. Those are the people that should be handling this situation. Thank you.
And now, Mr. Mannheim?
Well, I guess I can't follow up with that because I was part of that discussion with Ms. Huell on the Harvard board. No, I don't think we should arm teachers, but I think that, as Ms. Huell mentioned, that was brought on by the rural districts southern Illinois and where it takes 30 to 45 minutes for them to have somebody get there. So, I think that's, I think it's, you know, it's a broad, we're not going to sell this on the school board, but as a state, you know, we're treated as one giant state, but there's so different many pockets of demographics from Chicago, you know, down to southern Illinois. And I think that's, that's the challenge of the lawmakers and when they try to come up with state mandates and stuff, you know, it might work in St. Charles, but it might not work in the city or it might not work in southern Illinois. So...
Thank you. Ms. Gupta Krishnan?
I think just a common vote here, no, I would not arm teachers because teachers have enough to do and focus on. I would like to have the experts brought in and create a safe environment for us. We will, I would favor the training to identify and save themselves from active shooter if that happens, but not arming the teachers. That's not good for the overall mental peace or the guns under in the facility. No, I do not favor that.
Thank you all. Next question. Haven't forgotten anybody, right? Are you confident in the facilities decisions being made by the school board? And how would you ensure that the best decisions are being made? Personally, we'll begin with right now is Mr. Seaman.
So, we have an opportunity to engage the community, our taxpayers on facilities. It's a really critical conversation that needs to happen. I'm confident in some of the decisions that have been made. I'm confident in some of the dialogue. It's carried on a little bit too long, in my opinion, but to be able to engage the community effectively to determine where their tax dollars need to be spent, how their students are engaging in those environments from a facility standpoint, ensuring that they're safe, secure, and that opportunity for them to step foot in that building provides them the best learning environment that we can possibly provide. So, where we can improve and where I think we can grow more confident is in events like this where we have open forum, open dialogue for our community to provide recommendations, provide suggestions in an environment where everyone feels comfortable with that. And so, the opportunity to improve our facilities through open dialogue would be my recommendation.
Thank you. Ms. Barker?
So, I also want to second that it is important to seek out, aggressively seek out the community's involvement when it comes to facilities and it comes to the buildings and decisions that are being made about those buildings. They're a big asset to the district and that's one of those areas I feel that the community does need to speak up. I do want to say that we have a big decision on the table that is coming up and that's the Haynes Building. I do have some concerns about the funding source for the Haynes Building, the proposal at least. There is a million dollars of Medicaid money that's planned to be used. And then we have like four seconds left, but if you don't know what Medicaid money is used for within a school, please see me afterwards. I will talk to you about that.
Mr. Bryant?
So, the, I think we have to look at the usage of facilities and facilities planning long-term and how are these facilities going to be used five, 10, 20 years down the road? Right now, I feel decisions sometimes are being made in the short-term and not with the best interest of students. I'm going to refer to the Haynes project that Jillian brought up and the actual student impact, the, I should say, the students that are going to be using that, there's some great ideas from that project, but much of that project will end up going to administrative costs and administrative spaces, which I, at this point, have a very difficult time getting behind. I think something needs to be done with that building, but we need to look long-term, have a long-term plan, facilities plan to best determine how that space is going to be used.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Ms. Huell?
Thank you. And I am one of those people that's been making those decisions and they're never made lightly. Decisions about elementary school started with the Facilities Commission in the late 90s where I was the co-chair with Don Wood, he was just Don Wood at the time. And we talked about it in the 90s and other things came up. And then there was one in 2012 for middle school facilities. I'm sorry, there was '08, there was a referendum. And then we all know what happened after '08. It was very, the debacle. But anyway, we take our time. We've known that we needed, we wanted to make adequate facilities and equal facilities for both middle schools. You could not have compared Redling and Thompson and thought that those two kids had the same experience. In addition, we've got a low decline of enrollment, which is really significant, and we have to make decisions. We watched that also from 2011 when Dr. Schlemann said, you know, you should see this. We all thought, no, St. Charles just grows and grows. And it's one of those things boards have to look at.
Thank you, Ms. Huell. Ms. McKay? I think it's key to have a long-range plan. I think we have had great care of our buildings, undergrounds and maintenance, but I think that now that we have settled, it looks like we've settled with elementary, it's time to plan where we're going. I think it is important to have input from the community and the neighborhoods. I'm concerned that the decision on Haynes is coming at this fast. I'm going to go backwards. It should have been done when the project started so the neighborhood would know. Otherwise, now we're going to have an empty building and that is something that neighbors do not want to have. They move in to, knowing that they're by a school, they know all the impact a school can have, but without a long-range plan, knowing ahead of time, the neighbors and the community are going to struggle with knowing how we use our facilities. Thank you. Ms. Gupta Krishnan? Do you want to get?
I start it.
You start.
You start.
This is a tough topic. I will take it from the entrepreneur's eyes. We like to, entrepreneurs like every single dollar spent works for us. And it's painful that we invest money and then we don't have a comprehensive knowledge of the situation of any building that we have already invested a lot of money in the community. I would like to have any building, whether, well, right now, the question, a more comprehensive evaluation, what is in favor? And I would like to have it done professionally, whether sales or remodel or repurpose. I would like to have multiple options and then share with the community and come to a decision that makes sense for all of us, not just on a board level made a decision.
Thank you. And Mr. Mannheim?
Thank you. I do think that we make good decisions and sometimes they're hard decisions. When I got on the board, not all of our schools were air-conditioned. And now they are, from a classroom setting, they are air-conditioned. And I think that's really important. We had days that were being called because it was too hot. I remember year or two after I was on the board, Dr. Schlemann took me through Thompson and you could see how slippery the floors were because of the humidity and how hot it was in there. And he took me to the science rooms and showed me how inadequate they were and how small they were. And the ones at Redling where kids were, you know, having the newest equipment. And so, we started talking about Thompson six years ago. And at the time, maybe it wasn't right because of our, the numbers of where the kids are. And as we started seeing a decrease, that made sense for the time to happen. So, let's expand Thompson. Now Thompson's going to be on the same playing field with Redling as far as facilities and equipment. And now, yeah, now we have the big discussion with Haynes.
Thank you all. Do you all have more to say about Haynes? Because I have a couple more questions about Haynes specifically. What plans would you support for Haynes? We could start this time if you have some things to say. Ms. Barker?
Sure. Okay. So, I support a centralized district office in a way that I know that it provides the ability for those groups of people to make decisions together and problem-solve together in a more rapid way when we spread across the district. However, except my issue is with the funding source. So, the funding source of being a million dollars of Medicaid money concerns me because that should be used, and the law states should, that it should be used to put back into the programs that actually bring that money forth, which is your speech paths that bill, your social workers that bill, and your PTs and your OTs that bill Medicaid. That's where that money comes from. And it's supposed to go back into those programs or support those programs with professional development and things like that. There's a long list of those things, but that's what's recommended. And for our students' mental health, I think it's important that we utilize funding for our students from Medicaid.
Mr. Bryant?
I don't know if I have the exact answers to what to do with the Haynes Building right now. I think, again, it plays into this bigger, bigger question of what are we doing with all of our facilities? I look at Fox Valley Elementary School right now, it's being used, eight classrooms are being used right now. So, I, again, I don't have the answers, but I think as a board, we can work together, we can get input from the community, we can make a long-term plan to figure out what is going to be best for all of our facilities in the future.
Ms. Huell?
Yes. The question on Haynes is the board is taking its time to see what the community needs. And it's been interesting, as time goes by, we have found out that the Park District is very interested in partnering with us and using the gym and maybe the orchestra and the larger rooms for their activities down in the community, right where people will be able to use it. We have an excellent partnership with them at the Norris Rec Center and in other ways. So, they're a perfect partner for us and to use it right in the community. There are several programs which would fit in beautifully. One of them is Transitions, which are the kids that are 18 to 20, to 22. And the industrial kitchen that's at Haynes could be used for their education or job skills. There's also a Northeast Academy for kids that are behind on their credits and maybe would have a different kind of school and we might be able to partner with other school districts, just as we do with Fox Valley Career Center in Aurora. It's a lot of information. I'm sorry. But those students could use that school. So, there's a lot to be done and that's possible and we're just taking our time. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McKay? Like everybody, I think that the use of the building is important and I think the ideas that are coming forth from the administration about what programs can go there are, I like. I like the idea that there are opportunities for our kids. I'm not sure enough about the finances, but that would be a great question. I would go back to, this is, we're coming to the end of the project, the kids are going to be leaving. Is this building going to be empty? The board needs to make a decision. And Mr. Seaman?
All of our facilities from a usage standpoint should have the first priority of kids having access to it. So, let me just start by saying that. One area that I am passionate about after that has been accomplished is teacher development. We know in our careers and your careers and your experience, when you feel supported at your job and you feel like you have the tools, the resources... at your job, and you feel like you have the tools, the resources, everything that you need to do your job well, you're better, you're more effective. And so, providing an environment where we can come together and not be siloed, from a teacher development standpoint, our buildings are working in silos. We're not capitalizing on best practices across our entire system, sharing those experiences with all of the kids, providing a physical space for that to happen, that they feel is involved and engaged, could be a really good use for the resource.
Mr. Matt?
Thank you. Yes, as Mrs. Huo mentioned, we're part of that discussion, that is our current board, and it's been coming through Business Services now for months. And I think, you know, each month, we talk about it, and maybe we shed a different light or a different view on things. And we, so our task is to challenge the administration to come back to us with ideas, and how can we utilize that building to the best of our abilities, is it partnering with the Park District? I think we've talked about, you know, our schools aren't just schools, they're community assets. You know, we work with the Park District over at the Norris Wrecks Center. Basketball leagues runs out the gyms for their leagues and everything. Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts use them, you know, they're community centers. So, I think keeping it as a community asset is the most important thing, and if we can house transitions programs there, or night school there, or anything that we can do to better the district, you know, that's what the key of it is, and then, you know, then we tackle the funding portion.
Ms. Gupta Krishnan?
I would like to see it as a return on investment point of view, and the community has invested money, and the product of the school is high academic achievement. And anything that diverges from that is not the best value that we get out of it. I do not have enough information in terms of different uses, whether repurposing, and there are some very nice thoughts that we can use it, but I would like to see more evaluation in terms of what is the return on each type of project, and share it with the community before making a decision.
All right. Thank you. What, in your opinion, is the ideal cap for a K-12, excuse me, a K-2 classroom? In other words, cap some of the youngest kids in school, their classes, and I believe it's Mr. Bryant's turn to begin?
I'm sorry, you said yes about class size for K-2? Class size, you know, as an educator, I know class size matters. It really does. The ability to reach every kid when you do have those big numbers is difficult. At the same time, I don't know if I can set an absolute number, you know, a set number as to what class size needs to be. We need to look at the students in that classroom. What needs do those students have? Do they have IEPs or 504s? What other academic needs do they have? How big is the classroom? So, I don't know if I'm sidestepping this question by not giving an exact number, but I don't know if there is an exact number. There are so many factors that go into what is going to determine the success of a student, and the last thing is having a solid teacher in there that knows how to teach the kids, whether it's, you know, to help with the educational needs of that student.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Ms. Huo?
Thank you. Actually, I'd say Mr. Bryant is absolutely correct. It's not the size of the classroom, it's the quality of the teacher and the resources behind that. I would like to say that the average class size in our school district right now is 22. It's 22. It used to be 29. I, not the average, but the cap was 29 up until this year, and by the negative part of closing one school, we were able to group kids better, and the class size went down from 29 to 27 as a maximum. My kids were here 30 years ago, and that would have been fantastic back then, because I don't think any of us had that. So, to be able to do that with the resources and not, and still to be able to give, to keep the tax rate at a very low level, I think is a real success. And so, I think if it is 22, if it's between 22 and 23 for those young grades, that's a tremendous number, and it's the quality of private school, really. So, I'm perfectly happy with it. There's no exact number, though.
Ms. McKay?
I taught K-2. I looped to first grade one year and then second grade the second year. It was a different kind of configuration, and it helped with class size. I agree, there isn't one number. I have seen outstanding instruction with 29 kids and terrible instruction with 13. So, it is about the teacher in front of the kids. It is about meeting their needs, building relationships. I would say that it gets more difficult with more kids. You just don't have the time in your school day to meet every need, knowing that you go home thinking about them and what you missed, and did you answer all their questions? Those are difficult things when the class size goes up. I was responsible for class size when I was the assistant superintendent. It was not easy, because kids don't come in nice neat packages of 22. And so, they move in, and you didn't know that. We had a lot of discussions about too many kids, but that's almost there.
And Mr. Seaman?
I also taught K through two kids for about five years, and